So to let you know the council returned from closed session, we did not complete our closed session work and so we will at the end of the city council meeting adjourn and return to closed session and then report out after that if there is any reportable action. So now I will call to order the regular meeting of the Atascadero City Council and I will ask Mayor Protim Newsom to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Darius? Councilmember Borbo?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Moreno?
Here.
All present. Thank you. And now I just, I wanted to take a moment. Several of you, or most of you probably by now have heard about Detective Luca Benedetti, who was with us, San Luis Obispo Police Department, and a member of the regional SWAT team, and he was killed in the line of duty yesterday. Luke actually served with the Atascadero Police Department for four years before transferring to San Luis Obispo, and I know that many are grieving his loss. And so I would ask that you would join me right now in a moment of silence. Thank you. And welcome. If you are watching or listening to the city council meeting tonight, we're so glad that you're here. And if you would like to speak during the time that is set aside for community forum, or during public comment on any one of our agendized items, you can do so if you're in the webinar by raising your hand. And if you're watching us on TV or listening to us on 1230 KPRL, you can do that by calling into 805-538-2888. When you do call in, please let us know which item it is that you would like to speak on. Again, that number is 805-538-2888. And I would ask if we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move?
A second.
By councilmember Funk, and I think a second, just a beat out by Charles, councilmember Borbo. We will waive in reading, waive the reading in full of all ordinances that are appearing on this agenda, and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes. Roll call, please. Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. And we are on to presentations. We have Bike There with SlowCog, and I'm not sure that I am seeing either Peter Williamson or Catalina Hubbard.
Do you see me? I am...
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. I'm looking over here in the panelist list, and you're right there in front of me. Catalina, hi, welcome to our meeting.
Hello. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, can you guys see my slide?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So, good evening, Mayor Moreno and City Council. My name is Catalina. I am a program coordinator at the San Luis Obispo Council of Government, also known as SlowCog. That's our region's agency responsible for transportation planning and funding, and I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. But first, I would like to invite all of you to Bike There with us anytime from Thursday, May 20th through Sunday, May 23rd. We have over 120 participating locations in the county, including schools. Actually, all of Atascadero Unified School District is participating, which is awesome. Coffee shops, we have breweries, open space locations like the Bob Jones Bike Trail, the top of Sarah San Luis Obispo. So you can visit that URL on the screen right there, rideshare.org/bikethere for a map of all of our locations. When you biked any of these locations, you're gonna see a sign like on the screen, and you're gonna take a picture with the QR code. It gives you a quick little thing to fill out your information. You'll be entered to win that electric bicycle that is in the picture, and it's about, it's a $600 electric bike, so super cool. So we've partnered up with Public Health to have some safety signage about social distancing. We have CMS signs in the jurisdictions urging people to look out for bicycles and slow down. So that is, we've also partnered with the schools and we're doing bike safety and trying to get students out on their bikes during the month of May. So some of the other prizes that we're doing is gonna be a buff and a sticker to the first 500 people who stop at any location throughout the county. So drop your mailing address in the form that pops up when you scan that QR code, and we can mail that, all those prizes to you. You can also earn a Bike There t-shirt by logging bike trips in irideshare.org during the month of May. So you can get all, all your swag from Ride Share. We're asking folks to share photos on social media with the Bike There hashtag, so the community can celebrate biking and walking together. You can also email us at info@rideshare.org if you're not on social media. Kind of back to our regular scheduled program, what is SlowCog. So we, every four years, we do a regional transportation plan update. It helps us decide what we're gonna prioritize when we go after funding. We are currently doing that update right now. The plan goes through 2045. So here we have the topics in which we're asking for feedback. So everything from wanting bike lanes to, you know, if your internet is not strong enough to work from home, we want to hear about all of that. So you can find those surveys at slowcog.org/engage, and they're open until the beginning of July. So we're really encouraging folks to take those and let us know what they want to see in Slow County. So hopefully you guys join us with Bike There during Bike Month and take those surveys for the RTP, and that's all I have for you guys. So I'm more than happy to take any questions or any comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. We appreciate you being here. We have quite a strong biking community in Atascadero. We see them all over the place. And so, so good to have you here and promoting people getting out on their bikes, being physically active and out of their cars and traveling by bike. So fantastic. Any questions from my fellow council members? All right. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Have a beautiful rest of your evening. All right, we are gonna move on to our consent calendar, and the consent calendar contains items that are considered routine in nature and they're, and non-controversial by city staff, and they can be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. And so I will look to my council members to see if there are any members. Yes, councilmember Funk?
I'd like to take item two off the consent calendar.
Okay, we will...
For a brief question.
Pull item two for a brief question, okay? And I will look to our attendees in the webinar and see if there are anybody by raise of hand if you would like to pull an item on the consent calendar. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Luke, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to pull an item?
We do not.
Okay. And I will ask our city clerk, have we received any emails by anyone who would like to poll or comment on the consent calendar?
We have not.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to entertain a motion on items one and three through seven.
I'll move approval of the consent counter minus item A2.
A second.
A motion by councilmember Borbo, a second by councilmember Funk. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. Councilmember Funk, item A2.
Sure. On item A2, the Apple Valley Assessment Districts, I have been in communication with some members of residents of that district who are interested in shaping the landscaping planning a little bit, not necessarily changing the budget for the, for the landscaping, but to look to make the contract a little more flexible, or to set up a process whereby interested members of the community could meet on a semi-annual or quarterly basis and go through and find some of the things, is this landscape has gotten older, don't need to be done as often, or might be, need to be done differently. They could save some money that way and have that to, you know, replace some of the older plants, or do some things that just allows for the fact that this isn't, the landscape has grown in for a number of years, and its needs are different than they were. Just doing the same thing every year may not make the sense. So my understanding, for, for the question for the city manager, for folks who are interested in being part of that discussion, whom should they contact and what is the time? And then our understanding is that this, tonight is not a discussion of that, but merely an announcement that this, that the, that the money for these districts will be agreed to on a coming, upcoming date.
Correct. The item you have before you tonight is basically a notice of intent saying, we intend to levy these taxes, and we intend to hold a public hearing on it for, I believe it's July 8th, at that date. So that will take place then. We are going out to bid for landscaping contracts this summer. And so if people are interested in giving inputs on what that bid looks like, now would be the time to contact our Public Works Department. I don't know the phone number off the top of my head, but it is on the website and in a number of places. I know you can always call 470-3180, and Dawn is the nicest person in the world and will, second to Jerry, of course, and will pass you on to the right person there and make sure that we do that. We do ask the residents to try and get together by themselves to gather input and consolidate the input. If each resident is, is contacting us, that takes a little bit of time. And as you know, we can't subsidize these assessment districts, so they are charged for all of that time each individual calls us. So if they can consolidate, get together, hold those meetings that they'd like to as a group, you know, and then contact our Public Works Department, or contact our Public Works Department to be a part of that discussion with the group, we can certainly do that. Jerry, was there anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add the date was June 8th.
Oh, June 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I say just to note, if the, the dis, that district or any other ever wants to change the structure and become an HOA, and they could be in charge of their own landscaping and lighting, that would be just fabulous. And then city isn't the middleman, and they can really take ownership over it. So that is certainly welcome, too. Any other questions from council before I ask for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will go to the attendees. If you want to raise your hand, if you've got a question or a comment on item A2, if you're on the phone, star nine. Luke, do we have any callers?
We do not.
All right. And Laura, I'm gonna assume we don't have anybody who's between now and then emailed us on this item.
We do not.
All right. So with that, I will ask for a motion.
Move approval of item A2.
A second.
A motion by councilmember Borbo, a second by councilmember Funk. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to updates from our city manager, Ms. Ricker.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you see my screen? Okay. Um, the first item I want to talk to you tonight about is Mr. Putter's paddle boats and concessions. So Mr. Putter's paddle boats will be open daily for business very soon. They had a soft opening over Mother's Day weekend, and will continue operating Wednesday through Sunday from 10:00 AM with the last boat out at 5:00 PM. So right now, that's the tentative schedule for the summer, but we're excited to have paddle boats back. And then nothing signals summer like people paddling around the lake. They do plan to open daily by Memorial Day weekend, and will be open daily throughout the summer. Next, we have the rock snake at Atascadero Lake. We are still looking for people to help it grow. At last count, the Atascadero Lake Rock Snake has grown to an impressive number of 7,748 rocks and measures about 1,700 linear feet. So we need to, before we can apply for the Guinness Book of World Records, we need to have at least 8,500 rocks in our snake before we submit our application. So keep adding your decorated rocks. We're getting close. It has grown tremendously. Been a few weeks since I walked around the lake, and I was amazed at how far it's gone. So keep it up, everybody. We, we want to get that world record. Okay, I have to show this. Is this not the cutest? So this is a very cute new little baby prehensile-tailed porcupine at the zoo. They are just absolutely adorable when they're young. It's amazing how quick they turn and start to look like their parents. So get on out to the zoo soon. Come see our new baby prehensile-tailed porcupine. And then just a final reminder for the citywide yard sale. It's gonna be held on Saturday, June 5th. Event details are available at atascaderoyardsale.com and at visit atascadero.com. If you still want to get in to sell your stuff, it's not too late. So sign up and sell your stuff and be registered and get on the map. The deadline for registering is May 20th. So both mark your calendar for June 5th, because we all want to love going yarding. And then also, May 20, oh, I apologize, May 29th, if you want to actually sell things. Proceeds from this event support the Play Joy Playground. They do a lot of the maintenance. There's some small little things they'd like to get done. It's a great, great event and great project. I also have one other item. I just, we're getting a lot of questions on, well, when will the city council meetings be live and in person again? We are trying to be as inclusive and as transparent as we possibly can. And so we're trying to prepare for hybrid meetings, a meeting where somebody could participate both in person or virtually if they don't feel comfortable coming in person, or we still have some limits on the number of people or any of that. There are some technology changes that do need to be made in order to accomplish that in any kind of professional manner. We are aiming and hoping that by July, we will be able to have people back in the council chambers for those people that, that would like to, to give testimony in person. So we are aiming for that. It really depends on the availability of the technology equipment. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rochelle. Any questions from council? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you so much. We're moving on to community forum. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for persons who want to address the city council on any matter that is not on our agenda this evening and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we'll allow a maximum of 30 minutes for community forum. We have a timer on to assist you when knowing your time is up, and we do ask that you would state your name for the record. That helps us before making your comments. And with that, I will ask our city clerk, do we have any emailed public comment to be read into the record?
I do have one. This one actually timestamped at 5:45 on our end, but when you open it, it has a 2 o'clock receipt. So I am going to go ahead and read it, even though it was after the 5:00 PM, just in case it was a delay on our end. So you do have it in your inboxes, but you may not have seen it as of yet. This comes from Mitch Paskin. I'm submitting the statement in reference to the Oak Ridge Estates Residential Project in 3F Meadows. Since my last submission to the community forum, I have found out that there have been nine houses built and occupied in Phase 2 of the Oak Ridge Estates project. Again, the PD-11 reads that Senegal Road will be fully improved prior is issuing building permits in Phase 2. I don't have any exact dates for you, but I know that houses on San Felipe Court have been occupied for several years. The possible conclusion that could be drawn is that the city of Atascadero is continuing to aid Castle Rock Development in skirting the conditions of approval for the project. This continues to happen even as the city has to expend considerable resources to defend itself in court against complaints filed by Castle Rock Development. This is disturbing because it might point to the way the city will deal with Castle Rock Development when it comes to repairing San Marcos Road. The road is a choke point for the traffic created by Oak Ridge Estates. The traffic load will soon exceed the road's design parameters and ostensibly become unsafe. Compounding the traffic volume is that the road has been damaged by the heavy volume of construction traffic. It's apparent when you see patches on patches that are now subsiding again because the road bed was not properly repaired properly. There hasn't been work done on the road in years. The PD-11 and their performance agreement dated 2001 called for the road to be repaired. I have asked the city for an explanation why it has issued the Phase 2 building permits. I haven't received an answer. I pointed out to the city on multiple occasions that San Marcos Road and Los Altos Road, for that matter, are in need of repair, but have received no assurances that any repairs are pending. These issues aren't going away. For more information about Oak Ridge Estates, please go to www.roadto41.com. Thank you. And that's the only email comment we have received for community forum.
Thank you. And I will now look to individuals on the webinar. If anybody would like to raise their hand, you can hit that little raise hand button. If you're on the line, you can dial star nine. And I'm not seeing any hands. Luke, do we have any callers that are wishing to speak?
We do not.
All right. So I just give it one more chance here. Anyone on the webinar who would like to speak, please raise your hand. The little raise hand icon is at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And seeing none, I will close community forum and bring it back to council. We do thank you all for being here tonight. And if there's anyone who thinks of something afterwards that they failed to mention or needs to get in contact with us, you can reach the city clerk at 805-470-3400 or cityclerk@atascadero.org. And I will ask the city manager to reach out to Mr. Paskins regarding his concerns. Thank you. We will now move on to our public hearing, item B1, Title IX, Chapter 17 of the UNICOD. And I will first start out by asking my council if we have any expertise on this item. I'm seeing shaking of heads. Nobody has any expertise, including myself. And I will turn this over to our deputy city manager, city clerk Laura Christiansen, for a quick brief on the continuation of this item.
Sure. There, on this item, it was a public hearing, so we do need to continue it to a date certain, which on there we've put as May 25th. When going through the ordinance, some of the language, we wanted to make sure that we have it buttoned up and done correctly prior to coming to the council for approval, so that there's no need to return and to clean anything up. So we're working through that right now with the city attorney's office, and we will bring it back to you. But like I said, because this was a public hearing, and the public was made aware of this meeting, we do need to continue it, which would require the council to open the public hearing. If anyone has shown up to speak on this, give them that opportunity, and then leave it open until we come back to the date certain.
Okay, thank you. So as you heard, we're not going to have a presentation tonight. We're not going to have a discussion tonight, but, and we will be coming back to, to the next meeting with this item. If there is anyone who is here to speak and would like to speak tonight, maybe you can't make it on the 25th, or maybe you want to speak tonight on the 25th, that is just fine. So I will open it up to public comment, and I will look to the webinar if anybody would like to raise their hand to speak. And if you're on the phone, you could press star nine. I'm not seeing a hand on the phone. Are you, is there anyone on your end, Luke, that you see that would like to speak?
Nope, no callers.
Okay. And Laura, have we received any email input on this item?
We have not.
Okay. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will, do I close public comment and then continue, or simply continue?
No, do not close public comment, please. And then we'll just need a motion.
Open, and you need a motion to continue?
Yes, please.
All right. I move that we continue this item to our May 25th meeting.
Second.
With a motion by Mayor Moreno, a second by councilmember Borbo. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to public hearing, item number, number B2, weed abatement, hearing of objections. And I will ask our council if we have any expertise. Not on my end either. So I'm seeing shaking of heads, no expertise on this item. We will turn this over to our fire chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. Can you see my screen right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you tonight at our public hearing for weed abatement. This is the annual hearing of objections. This is one step in our weed abatement process that we go through every year. So just a little bit of background here. Weed abatement is a critical piece of our fuel management plan alongside backyard burning, our chipping program, the green waste program, always our public education campaigns. Weed abatement is probably the, makes the biggest difference for our community, basically by creating many fire breaks around property lines, around buildings, keeping a fire small before it gets larger into the fuels and allows the fire department to, to get there in a timely manner and get the fire put out before it does damage and makes a run through, through fuels. So this is a critical component, and it is a piece where citizens manage their own property. We encourage citizens, by, we'll get to it in a minute, to take care of their own fuels and manage their properties in order to create that fire safe community that we all desire. So our process begins at the end of March, the last week, and the first week of April with an inspection of all 11,000 plus parcels in the city. And we go on April 13th this last year, where we declared weeds a hazard by the city council. And then we mailed out notices at that point. And this year, we mailed out just under 3,000 notices. So our, I think our, our light fuels were down a little bit just from our rains this year. But, so that's a little bit less than we did last year, but there are still quite a bit fuels that will be, need to be cut by our deadline, which is June 1st. So that's the next step, is these notices were given to people with, with fuels that need to be cut. The deadline, like I mentioned, is June 1st, and after that, we'll have a city contractor go out and begin cutting these parcels. And typically, every year, we cut about 20 to 25 over the last, say, four or five years, is how many we've had to have the city contractor abate. So tonight, we get to tonight, and we are here to listen to any objections. So those, those people that received a notice in the mail, and anyone that feels like they need to object to having a contractor cut, if they don't do it themselves by June 1st, is allowed to speak. So our recommendation tonight is council adhere all objections to the proposed removal of vegetative growth and/or refuse, and allow or overrule any objections. And author is the fire chief to proceed and perform work of abatement. And that concludes my presentation. Over to you if you have any questions.
Thank you, chief. Before going to the public for objections, I will look to council to see if there are any questions on this item. Seeing none, I will open up public comment. And if you're on the webinar, if you want to raise your hand, if you want to speak on this item, if you have an objection or want to speak to it otherwise, please raise your hand if you're on the phone, a star nine. Seeing none, currently, I will ask our city clerk if we have any email objections or comments to be read into the record.
We do not.
Okay. Going back to the webinar, seeing no hands, nobody on the phone, I will go ahead and close public comment, and I will bring it back to the council for a motion. Councilmember Funk?
Yes. Since we have not received any objections to the proposed removal of vegetative growth and/or refuge, I move we authorize the fire chief to proceed and perform the work of abatement.
A second. We have a motion by councilmember Funk, a second by Mayor Protim Newsom. Roll call, please. Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. Onto item C1. This is our downtown street tree renewal... Onto item C1, this is our downtown street tree renewal program, phase two. And to present this item is our fairly new to Atascadero, yet longtime Atascadero resident, Public Works analyst Ryan Betts making this presentation. Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening. Mayor and city council, actually, I'm thinking I want to have interim Public Works Director Ryan Hayes do a quick intro. I really want Ryan to speak tonight, so I wouldn't want to take away that effort, that opportunity for him. I was actually really excited you had taken that opportunity away from me, so.
I was like, no, you do it, no, you do it. You don't bite, no matter what Rochelle has told you.
No, good evening. Yeah. I did want to introduce our newest member to Public Works, Ryan Betts. As you mentioned and already know, he's longtime resident of Atascadero. He's been previous employee by the city of San Luis. We are excited to have him here. We already have a great staff in Public Works. Director DeBar is doing a great job of getting good staff here, and Ryan adds to that incredibly. You'll find that out tonight with his presentation, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. All right, and on to the, Ryan, who is Betts?
Thank you, mayor, council. Again, my name is Ryan Betts. I'm the new Public Works analyst. Just checking in to make sure everyone can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I just, before we get started on the item before you tonight, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the rest of the city council for the kind words regarding the tragic event that happened in San Luis Obispo. Yesterday evening, I worked with both of those officers over my course of my career at the city of San Luis Obispo, and we certainly sent in our thoughts and prayers to their families. So thank you for that. The item before you tonight is really an update to our beloved downtown street tree renewal program, including phase one and phase two. The recommendations before you tonight is receive that update on phase one and enter direct staff to initiate phase two of the downtown street renewal program and improve the downtown street tree guidelines. So we'll get a little bit more detail on what those look like and feel like. By way of background, it's important to note that the maintenance of sidewalks, tree wells, and street trees is on the responsibility of the property owner in the downtown, and that is per our city municipal code. However, the city has a strong history of supporting the downtown, including the health of the street trees. And the council last summer met on July 14th, 2021, and actually appropriated $75,000 in one time funding to kind of kick off phase one of the downtown street tree renewal program. Part of that effort was to remove a number of problem trees identified in the downtown. Those were identified based upon conversations and public engagement efforts with property and business owners. Those trees predominantly were the ornamental plum in the, on, located on Entrada, and some were on Palma as well. Those trees have now since been removed and prepared for new tree planting. We also identified a number of areas that needed repair for sidewalks that really had some significant, potentially significant hazards due to the upheaval of the tree roots, kind of bifurcating out the sidewalk. And then also to prepare for some tree replacements, you know. In addition to that, we wanted to return to the city council with an update to what we call the downtown tree guidelines. And that really is a document that helps guide the public and staff with a uniform, consistent approach on what trees to plant, when, and where. So what is the downtown commercial district? Staff wanted to provide this map for the public to better understand what the area we're actually talking about. And just for the public at home, it's primarily along El Comino Real with corners of Rosario, Highway 41, all the way up to Olamita Avenue. But the primary focus really is on El Comino Real, Traffic Way, Entrada, and Palma. That's where the, the majority of the existing street tree wells are currently located in the downtown. Just a quick update on that phase one. Again, we removed a number of problem trees. We've stump grinded those trees out of the sidewalk and really kind of prepared the existing tree well. We also conducted additional detailed analysis of existing street trees and those hazards that we're facing. We also conducted some ongoing pruning and trimming, mostly on El Comino Real and Traffic Way. I also wanted to include a photo of the recently planted London Plain Sycamores. You'll hear that a couple of times tonight in front of, adjacent to the La Plaza project. As you can see, that sidewalk is a little wider than your traditional downtown sidewalks. We incorporated some additional dimensions for the street tree wells. We'll talk about that a little bit in a little couple of seconds. But really, that gives that, that new tree some room to grow and encourages it to have a healthy longevity life, if you will. So we're excited about those. Those are kind of our pilot project, if you will. And it's actually an area of sidewalk that we're seeing more and more cities do as they kind of learn to really promote a very positive, healthy tree in the long run. We did some focused areas on sidewalk repair. If you've noticed, it's the breezeway on Traffic Way of the Carlton Hotel. We did some sidewalk repairs there next to another London Plain Sycamore. We also spent quite some time looking and exploring alternatives to the tree grates. Those are primarily along El Comino Real and Traffic Way, but you also see them close to Galaxy Theater as well. We also wanted to develop that downtown street tree selection guides, a really methodical tree matrix, if you will, identifies what the species is by size, the specific location to plant that tree, including additional items, irrigation, maintenance, and engineering standards. We'll get a little bit into that in a second. There are generally three existing tree wells in the city of Atascadero in the downtown area, though I have included four. The primary three, if you will, are the concrete covers. Those are primarily on Entrada Avenue, where we really haven't seen as much public infrastructure upgrades based upon applicants than we've seen on El Comino Real and Traffic Way. So there's quite a number of concrete pavers. These are quote unquote, "the old school way" of putting tree wells and tree grates into the sidewalk. And then what you see along kind of the newer sections of sidewalks are the cast iron tree grates, and then the cast iron tree grates with pavers and bricks. And those are really to incorporate a sense of place, placemaking in the downtown area. I've included a picture of the fourth that we've seen. These are primarily filled with bark and native soil. These were existing cast iron tree grates. But what we find as staff when we maintain this area is these tree grates tend to rise up with the roots and become a potential issue with some of our residents and visitors visiting and enjoying our downtown. So there's really no course of action but to remove that tree grate without actually damaging the root structure and potentially damaging the tree. Staff looked at a number of different systems to reduce that conflict with the tree grate. And we came upon a number of best practices that have already actually been implemented in a number of different cities, not so many in our county alone, but there's a number of cities throughout the state and nationwide that have already implemented what's called a flexible porous paving system. It's a really, you know, not to get too Public Works geeky, but it's a really fascinating product that looks and feels almost like a decorative asphalt, but it's not. It, it's made out of mixture of recycled rubber chips, and it's got some aggregate. And then what's really important is this binding agent or glue that allows when water, when it rains, water can actually percolate through the soil. There's a number of other different benefits, incorporates water infiltration. It is crack resistant. It discourages soil compaction. And probably more, most importantly, it reduces that potential hazard and is fully ADA compliant as a surface. I would say that was our number one priority is identifying what would be ADA compliant to ensure that path of travel. And of course, a little icing on top of the cake. It's actually a lower cost than the cast iron tree grate. It is about for a five by five tree area, if you will. It costs about $250 in material. It doesn't take too long for staff to actually mix the material and place it into the tree well. We are looking at alternatives to source that material locally, and we're having conversations with some local vendors right now to get that purchased in at a local level. I do have a quick video, unless folks at home would like to see this, let's see if it works. So as you can see, that was a five gallon bucket that we filled, and we poured some water on it. That would be a heavy, to kind of mimic a heavy, heavy rainstorm. And as you can see, that water was able to infiltrate underneath to the tree and get to that root system. So we're pretty satisfied with this new system. We've actually done some pilots, programs or projects, if you will, along the Galaxy Theater sidewalk, near the previous old subway, if you will, near Highway 41, and then one tree planter in front of, I would just say it, Whiskey in June. That's in front of that business. And it seems to be working very well. And again, city of Oakland, a number of cities in Seattle, or near Washington and Seattle, and then on the East Coast have incorporated this and have really good results with it. The primary effort in kind of completing phase one and really continuously working with phase one was developing this downtown street tree guidelines. Again, it was really an effort to provide guidance to both staff and the public on what type of tree varieties for each street, what really makes the most sense. And we'll go over those street tree species in a second. We also wanted to respond to the scale and character and determine the tree size and aesthetics. El Comino Real is certainly a wider street than Entrada. And so we have to take those ideas and thoughts into which tree species we would like to see planted in the downtown area. And then we also, again, focused in on that potential conflict with sidewalk planners. We want to make sure that the, the species has the ability to have that root structure go deeper into the soil to avoid those conflicts, while of course, creating a sense of place. Street trees offer a natural economic benefit into the, the business environment that we're consistently trying to nurture in our downtown area. Let's dive a little bit deeper into the downtown street guidelines. We've organized it in primarily three sections, depending on the size of the tree. So for large, and these typically at, at its mature rate, if you will, is greater than 35 feet tall. Those are going to be your London Plain Sycamores, which you can see up and down El Comino Real and Traffic Way. And also a tree that we don't see quite often, but certainly we want to start to see a little bit more. And that's the tulip tree. It's a beautiful tree. It's deciduous. It's a very hardy tree, can stand, you know, all the elements that we have in our particular zone. The next one is medium. These are generally 20 feet to 35 feet tall at maturity. These are the ornamental pears and the Chinese pastash. You'll primarily see those on Entrada and Palma Avenue. And finally, the small, those are generally less than 20 feet tall. These are the crepe myrtles, what we call the strawberry tree, the western bud, and the chuk topa. Also including the guidelines is some specific instructions on how to plant that tree, including having a minimum requirement for a 15 gallon nursery container. It also goes in a little bit more detail about the responsibility of the property owner to irrigate. If there's irrigation not already previously provided to the tree well, we are requiring that what we call two to three inch PVC pipes be included in the replanting and new street trees. This helps ensure deep watering systems. They simply pour the water, if you will, at the surface level of the sidewalk, and it trickles down to the bottom of the tree well. And then, of course, we have some permitting requirements. They are very light, if you will. We are going to require for the certified arborists and professional landscapers to apply for a citywide blanket encroachment permit. It's one of the most minimal permits we have here at the city of Atascadero, and it helps ensure staff knows when those trees are being installed, and we can come out and inspect that to make sure it's meeting up with our standards and our requirements. Included in the downtown street tree guidelines are updated engineering standards. And so we really have two items or exhibits in front of you. One is for new street trees. So these are very similar to what's been, or what's going to be planted in front of the La Plaza project. And then we have another one for street tree replacements. I want to make note that the packet before you, and what the packet that the public has access to, the street tree replacement, and it's on page, I should have had that, I apologize. It's on page 259 of your packet. We actually refined a little bit that exhibit since the packet was released. It was very minor in detail. All we, all staff did was actually incorporate a little bit more detail for the public to understand what is required by them. It's really more of a customer service user face document than was previously, previously printed in your packet. So should council consider to approve the item tonight later on? We would ask them to incorporate that into the motion and into the minutes. I wanted to provide the council just a general map of what our current street tree inventory looks like. As you can see, there's two primary components that I think we should focus in on. One is those raywood ashes. Those were predominantly planted many years ago on El Comino Real and Traffic Way. Some, most of them are removed on Traffic Way, but there are primarily a number of them still on El Comino Real. They are either dead or in significant decay of dying. So we are promoting or planning on, with council's approval, replanting those with the London Plain Sycamores. In addition to those, those gray dots, if you will, are empty tree wells that over time, the trees have been removed and/or have been removed within the last year. Then you fast forward to what the proposed street tree inventory is. So we've color coded what's new trees to replace those raywood ashes and those empty tree wells. Those tree varieties will be based upon those guidelines set before you. So they're not color coded to reflect a certain species, just to show the council how full and lush that the new downtown will look once staff can work with the property owners on planting those trees. It's important to note that our focus over the next few months will be mainly on sidewalk improvements that are adjacent to those existing tree wells, where we're working with local contractors, keeping our money local, if you will, to focus in on Entrada Avenue. That's going to be our focus over the next month or two. And then we're going to kind of expand out. There are some sidewalk upheavals occurring on Palma Avenue that we're going to be working with the property owners to address, but that funding for that primarily will go toward that, those sidewalk improvements. And the thought process is really just to get that sidewalk and that tree well really set up so staff can continue working with the property owners to actually, for them to purchase and plant that tree again with a qualified arborist or professional landscaper. So we really want to set the table, if you will, for them to be, have a successful, easy process to get the tree installed and work with them, understanding what it takes to not only water it, but maintain it, including trimming when it's appropriate to do so. So staff certainly sees this as an ongoing partnership with the downtown property owners. The fiscal impact before you tonight is minimal per se, and that's because council already provided or appropriated that $75,000 last summer. Staff was entertaining some additional costs and recommendations to the council for additional $10,000 to $15,000 for that flexible porous pavement system. However, we really want to see how this goes, and we're just simply not ready to make that request of council. So we're going to, we're going to continue work, effort in the downtown sidewalks where they need to be and work with those property owners. So we're hoping to avoid any additional requests for additional funding. So again, the recommendations before council tonight, again, receive an update on phase one of the downtown street renewal program and direct staff to initiate phase two of the downtown street tree renewal program and approve the downtown street tree guidelines. And if so inclined, the updated exhibit as, as staff presented and identified in the packet to provide a little bit more detail for the public when planting trees. And that's it for the presentation. More than happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. And you can get Public Works geeky with us anytime.
That's right, okay, good.
Director DeBar does, and we love it, so we miss him, right? Director de Bar does and we love it. So we miss him, right? So you're here. You can do it in his stead. So thank you. And I've got to say, you found some tree wells that are recyclable, cost less, are ADA compliant. What else? No tripping hazards. They're better for the tree and we're looking to locally source like this, this, I don't think this could get any better. Very encouraged to hear that. I will look to council. I will start with council member Dara's followed by council member Funk.
All right, thank you. Nice presentation, Ryan. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too, council member.
All right. So just a couple of quick questions. Have we determined, have been able to determine what the annual cost of the individual property owners might be? To be able to maintain their trees. I wouldn't suspect it's going to be high, but more importantly, within all that is this, this the porous. Let's see where the flexible porous pavement issue called, what's the durability that? How long will it last on the, the initial installation? What is the upkeep on that? If it's completely replaced, how long are we looking for a complete redo of, of that system?
So great question. I'll answer the first question. You know, when it comes to annual maintenance of an existing street tree or a new planted street tree, it really comes down for the property owner to water. There will be some tree trimming required. We really want that new tree to flourish within the next two to three years before we identify any kind of branches or any kind of issues for, for tree trimming. And that's certainly, I would say, I'm hope my thought process is it's minimal at best. It's really the water and making sure, working with the property owner to ensure that that new tree is watered appropriately, certainly during the summer months is really what we're looking for. And we know whether that's every other day or even weekly. Oftentimes you find property owners or even the business owner, since they're on site all the time, go out right before they open shop and just pour a gallon or two down that long PVC pipe that ensures that it's infiltrated appropriately. One thing I failed to mention also that staff is going to be working with the, the certified arborists and the professional landscapers is when we do stump grinding and get ready for that tree planting, we're actually going to have them auger, if you will, a little deeper than they're probably used to. Of course, we'll do checks on, you know, any kind of underground utility lines, but barring that, the thought process is to give that new tree even additional incentive to go lower into the existing water table. Council may know this, but our water table in downtown can be almost five to six feet below the surface in some areas. And so we really want to encourage that street tree to kind of grow toward that water table and not back up to the sidewalk. Now, when it comes to the cost and or at least the durability of the flexible porous pavement system, it is from our research and talking to other cities, it has a long shelf life, if you will. It's designed to breathe and expand to a certain extent when the tree grows. I'll, I'll go a little story, but when I worked for the CSL, we were constantly cutting away the cast iron grates. Once the tree started to have conflict with that and it was very, very costly. This actually, a little bit more detail, we actually going to put a ring, if you will, an indented ring around the porous system with the same material to kind of again, give that new tree room to grow. But for all intensive purposes, because of the material and because of the binding agent, it will last a long, long time. It is a fairly new product that's been around for about ten, twelve years. So there have been truly studies on the longevity of it per se, but all signs point to this being the new way of street tree well improvements.
All right. Thank you very much.
And council member Funk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I incur, concur the mayor's enthusiastic support of a solution that looks nice and works well and costs less. Bravo. Also, I wanted to understand if you could throw up the tree, the street tree inventory picture or sketch.
Is it this one?
Yeah. Yep. That's the one. You've got a lot of new trees there along El Camino Real between Traffic Way and Rosario. That's an area that will be like all of this section of El Camino ultimately affected by our downtown infrastructure improvement plan. Can you talk to me about the timing of work on the street trees and versus what we're maybe hoping for as we seek funding for that infrastructure plan so that we don't end up planting trees that we're not going to be able to keep?
I'll say this, I'll, I'll, I'll say a couple of comments. I'm only a month new here at the city, but let's see how this goes. And then Mr. Hayes can certainly jump in. It's my understanding that both are going to work extremely well with each other. So the, the downtown enhancement plan, if you will, if I understand is it will not affect per se the sidewalk. It's really from curb to curb. Where we planning on doing all the diagonal and the, and the pedestrian enhancements, the diagonal parking, the, the tree planters or if you will, in the middle of the El Camino Real to kind of again, reduce potential traffic conflicts and slow down speeds. If that's the case, and I believe that's the case, this will actually have no negative effect, if you will. One thing that we will be doing is cutting out a little bit more again of that sidewalk up to the curb to give that tree a little bit more room to grow. We think that new standard will be applied throughout the downtown. So it'll, it'll provide that synergy to the downtown enhancement plan. I don't believe it'll have any negative effects on the proposed project. We are continuously looking and I will say, I know this because I am working on it. We are continuously looking for grant funding for that project. We are looking out under every federal and state rock for grants as we can. I believe there is some design funding being recommended for approval as part of the twenty one, twenty three budget. Certainly to start that design work. But again, to answer your question, I don't perceive any type of conflict. I actually see a more healthy canopy, if you will, all along El Camino Real, which will get again to this kind of space that I think the council really sees that vision of, of El Camino Real coming together in the next couple of years.
Thank you. I saw, I see the director, Dunsmore popped on. So if you wanted to add anything to that.
I think Mr. Betts handled that question perfectly. He's exactly right that the downtown infrastructure plan is a curb to curb plan that does not consider removing the existing sidewalk. So what we do is street trees now is not likely to be impacted. So I'll second that exactly what he said. So.
Be room in, in with this plan of street trees in that along El Camino Real. There'll be room to put some things in the middle, but you know, so that that's not all just hardscape space. Is that correct? I seem to recall that there were, that there were some sections of this where we had plantings.
In the middle of the road. Yeah. There's plantings in the middle of the road where you have the angled parking. In addition to the street trees that are now being contemplated in the sidewalk areas.
Great. It's a wide street. You've got room.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments before we go to public comment? Council member Borbo.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for the report. Um, question for you. When you talk a couple of things, I don't want to get down into roots, but I'm afraid I have to.
Oh, he did it.
No weeds, no weeds here, but there are roots. You talk in here about redoing the the openings and having a, you know, basically, it sounds like you're going to have like twelve inches of concrete going down around the edge of the tree wells. So that sounds like a lot of, you know, tearing up of concrete in order to add more concrete. When we, after the council had reviewed this, you know, initial plan previously, I had, I was talking with Public Works Director De Bar and walked, walked the downtown with him. I thought we were going to have some sort of root barrier, you know, like a, a plastic culvert pipe or something that would go down, force the roots of the trees down. And that seems like that would be a lot easier. Was it determined that wasn't feasible or something? Because this concrete things, redoing this concrete stuffs down, sounds very expensive and time consuming.
Yeah, a great, great question. And what Councilmember Borbo is talking about is what they call reverse curb where it's, it's on, and, and I'll clarify that the, the reverse curb, if you will, is kind of the border of a tree well. That's really for new sidewalk improvements. When we're talking about this particular effort for phase one, phase two, if you will, is actually cutting out that existing border. And then the, the, the flexible porous payment system would actually go right a butt up to the existing sidewalk. When it comes to root barriers, the thought process is for new construction, that, that, that new column or that new border for new construction will, because it's twelve inches, will act as its own root barrier system. It's, it's actually, we've seen that a lot in, in other cities, vice versa. You could include an actual a root barrier, which is a kind of a screen or system you put in right below the surface to encourage those roots to go down deeper and not come back up to the sidewalk. Both are applicable solutions. The only advantageous part to the twelve inch reversible curve is actually for new construction. It actually strengthens that existing portion of the sidewalk, which we has staff in generally engineering terms and find that's the area that breaks and or crumbles most because of the conflict with the tree. So the thought process is if we expand that depth a little bit, not only does it create a stronger sidewalk to prevent crumbling and cracking, it actually adds a root barrier system already built into it. But for the replacement of the existing trees, we are going to include or require a root barrier, a traditional root barrier system, not the twelve inch depth reverse curve.
So make sure I understood that correctly. We're only going to put the reverse curbs in, in new construction. And, and when are we talking about widening these tree wells? Because you talked about how some of them are narrower, smaller than you'd like. And what I'm getting at and leading up to is question about the, the property owner responsibility here. Because I want to make sure we're not, you know, expecting reverse curbs out of property owners that we're perhaps unless there's new construction going on.
Right.
Is, is that right? I mean, we're, we're not expecting a property owner, you say, okay, well, here's your empty tree well. And now here's this, this list of city standard, which standards, which now include reverse curbs. You know, professional arborist stump grinding to a lower level, et cetera, et cetera. Because I'm concerned about, you know, the cost that we're imposing. I understand we want it done right so they last. But I'm very concerned about the cost of this.
Yes, we are equally concerned with cost as well. We certainly, we're consistently looking for ways to not put the burden on the property owners much as we can as staff. I can assure you. When it comes to replacing the, the, the trees, if you will, and the existing tree wells that we're going to expand, yes, they will not be, it will, we'll acquire just that, that traditional root barrier system, which is a little bit more affordable than the reversible reversible, reversible curve. And we're also hoping by expanding the dimensions to five feet by five feet, potentially five feet to four feet, depending on the width of the sidewalk. That'll give that, that new tree ample enough room to grow. And combine that with a little deeper of an auger system to, to encourage it to go to the existing water table. We will not, we will hopefully reduce the, some of the significant historical sidewalk upheavals we've seen in the downtown.
And what about in here, it's kind of alluded to or mentioned about, well, I'm curious, you know, what you think the total cost of installing a new tree might be to a property owner. And I think it's mentioned in here, the possibility of having people sponsor a tree or a service club sponsor a tree. So I'm trying to get in my mind, I mean, because of this standard we're talking about, I'm, I'm kind of thinking this is not a two hundred and fifty dollar job to install a you know, an appropriate sized tree. It might be a five hundred or seven hundred and fifty dollar, or by the time I get done with it, a thousand dollar tree installation job. Do you have any idea what that might be and, and how we might you know, potentially get like service club sponsors or other sponsors for some of these downtown trees?
I do. I do have ideas. So our preliminary estimates, and we've actually reached out to professional, professional landscapers and arborists to really get understanding of what this is going to look like and feel like. I can tell you right now, like the rest of the construction trade, prices are a little higher than what we're all used to, both on a personal and professional level. That being said, it's going to be depending on this tree species. If the sidewalk is fully improved, and again, thank you, thank you, thank you to the council for preview, previously approving that funding to get that, that sidewalk to a place where the property owner can simply work to have that tree installed. It's going to be about, depending on the tree species, three to five hundred dollars to install that, that new tree. That includes the stump grinding or at least digging out, if we've already done the stump grinding, the existing dirt and, and including all the, the kind of simple irrigation things that we're looking for. We plan on doing a road show. So if you have community groups that you would like your beloved Public Works analyst to go and do a presentation on street trees, I am there. And I already know Councilmember Borbo will take me up on that. So I'm more than willing to go out and do the road show, encourage folks to participate. We are working on extending that program to those community groups to help sponsor a street tree. Our focus though is working with the property owner first and really exhausting as much as we can. Because ultimately we want to make sure that they fully understand it's their responsibility to maintain that street tree. That being said, we recognize there are a number of different reasons and hardships that property owners can possibly not be able to do at street tree. And that's when honestly, like many times before, our wonderful community groups will hopefully consider sponsoring those trees.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure you probably find a volunteer to help keep them pruned.
I, I know of one at least.
And I would ask, Mr. Betts, does that three to five hundred dollar cost include the cost of the tree? Or is that just the preparation and the planting of it?
It would be all included.
Okay.
It would be, it's important to know, and this is why we are setting this, this program. And if this city, if we simply said, hey, property owner, it would cost X amount of money. It would cost overall a little bit more than if we act as the middle person and connect that local certified arborist directly with the property owner. That's actually the most affordable for that property owner. So the price right there is really that connection. It would go up for a variety of reasons if the city did the planting themselves. Plus, that would get a little bit away from the municipal code requirement.
Understand. Councilmember Dara's.
Thank you. Just a follow up question on what Charles was asking you about with sponsors, people sponsoring the tree, whether it's an individual or a service club. Some that are going to do that may want to have a plaque or something there to indicate that they did that. And I'm just curious what the city's position is on something like that, what the policy is.
Great question. We've certainly talked about that. Our staff's recommendation is at this point in time to not introduce a, a plaque system, if you will. Primarily because the challenges of placing that in the, the, there's only really one area to put in. That's would be the flexible porous pavement system. And talking to other cities and areas, it really hasn't been something that they've looked into or at least done. There may be a way of doing it. We certainly can, can look into that if the majority of the council would direct staff to do that. There is certainly some pros in turning, you know, some pride, some ownership pride of a, of a community group and sponsoring a tree. We were hoping that just, just by way of the good sense of that they knew that they planted this particular tree on this sidewalk would be sufficient enough. But staff's recommendation, recommendation again is to not pursue a plaque process. It would potentially also add additional cost to the overall project. And we're, we're trying to be very mindful of going to community groups and knowing that they don't have limited amount of funding and trying to keep those costs down to an appropriate level.
All right. Thank you.
And it's not recommended that you carve the name of the organization into the trunk.
Certainly not, certainly not.
That is a no go. Just kidding there. Mr. Betts, could you help to just clarify when I look at the recommendation this evening? So we receive the update on phase one, of course. Then one of the things we're doing is approving the downtown street tree guidelines. Then one of the things we're doing is approving the downtown street tree guidelines with the updated exhibit. And then initiate phase two. Just for sake of clarity, could you tell me what it is that phase two is compared to phase one?
Sure, absolutely. Phase one was really to identify or, or really act on the removal of those problematic trees previously identified by property business owners. It'll also to do kind of focused area of some sidewalk improvements. And really develop or experiment, if you will, what do we want that long-term vision to be for the downtown area in terms of downtown street trees? We've done that work. We've incorporated all those changes, all those guidelines, if you will, in the new downtown street tree guidelines. What the, the property will receive is a nice, well-written friendly letter from the city of Atascadero. And will include the downtown street tree guideline. So they can walk through that and better understand what we are all trying to accomplish. And of course we'll have contact information. I'll be working with those property owners to bring that to fruition.
And so essentially phase two is then kind of going out to the business owners and saying, here's the plan. How can we assist you with this? How can we look for funding opportunities and, and that type of thing? The fixing of sidewalks, the problem trees and kind of the situation of that is all about phase one.
Correct. I would say we are about to jumpstart this in, in a lot of ways with the arrival of myself on in the department. So it's a three-pronged approach. We will absolutely focus on sidewalk improvements over the next couple of months. So you will see some construction activity primarily on in Trot Avenue. We are going to be as minimal to the impacts to the downtown property owners and businesses as much as possible. And we will certainly be notifying them and working with them to minimize any interruption to the downtown shopping dining that we all enjoy in our downtown. The second one is to reach out to those property owners as part of that project to start to have those conversations about the tree planting. And the third one was be reaching out to community groups to really understand if they would like to participate in the, in the overall program.
Fantastic. Thank you for clarifying. All right. Well, we've asked a lot of questions. Oh, and it counts member for them.
Yeah, I just added, it's sort of a question, sort of a comment regarding the recognition of let's say a service club or something, somebody that puts it on there, puts in a tree, pays for a tree. Would be maybe some temporary signage. So I'm asking if this is viable. You know, for even if it's 30 days or something or 60 days. And the reason is, it isn't just to provide recognition for whoever did it. It's a matter of, you know, if, if Rotary sponsors a tree and somebody for Kiwanis is going to walk by and go, hey, we should do that. In other words, you know, or they see somebody they know did it and they're going to go, well, you know, maybe I should do that. In other words, it would help perhaps prompt other people to come, other people, organizations to come forward and do it. And so just even just literally, you know, you have a temporary, you know, cone there or something, or just something hanging from the tree, whatever, you know, just something there for just a little short period of time that says, hey, this tree was sponsored by so and so. If you're interested, call Ryan Betts at City Hall.
We could certainly do that. My mind's already going into brainstorming mode. We could, you know, part of the new tree planting, there'll be two wind stakes in there temporarily to make sure that that, you know, tree grows a nice straight and, and narrow way. That might be an opportunity to put some temporary signage that's tasteful, that doesn't look like it looks, you know, garage sale-ish, if you will. But that spurs some competitive spirit, I think. Is that what you're looking for within the community groups? If they want to have a competition between each other to help sponsor this, I am all for that. It staff can easily incorporate that type of signage. It's tasteful, that's temporary, attached to those tree stakes.
I think that would be good just because most people are going to see the tree put in. They're probably going to, most people are going to assume the city did it. They're not even going to assume that the business owner did it. And they're certainly not going to assume that a, you know, a volunteer or a, or a service group did it. And, and so pointing it out might prompt more support.
Yeah, they might not even know that it's needed. So yeah, nice idea. So yeah, but no feather flags or, you know, torn banners, no garage sales stuff.
No sandwich boards.
All right. All right. Any other questions before we go to public comment? All right. Seeing none, I will turn to the attendees in the webinar. And if you are here tonight, either in the webinar, you can raise your hand if you would like to comment on this item. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Any hands? I'm not seeing any Luke. I'm not seeing a hand on the phone. Is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
We have no callers.
Okay. I do see one hand now. Mr. Oslin.
Good evening, council. Takes a minute to unmute. And Mr. Betts, I have a, a list, of course. So for council thinking I was going to be quiet all night, surprise. So my first question would be the recent plantings of trees by La Plaza. Was that done the new way with the, I forget what you called it. Sorry on my notes. For the roots and not messing that up. That would be my first question. The second one is the permitting process, making sure it is very easy. And I do want to remind our council and staff that our downtown is made up of not just business, but also residential. And with that being said, some property owners are not the business owners and vice versa. So telling a property owner that they're responsible for watering needs to trickle down possibly to a business owner because the property owner may not even be around. I think we have to be cautious on how we perceive that with both our business owners and our property owners, including our homeowners in the downtown that may or may not be residential owners. That is my concern there. And other than that, I think putting trees in is great. I just want to know why a professional arborist or landscaper has to plant the tree. If it was somebody like Charles or myself, I'm sure we could figure out how to plant the tree for a lot less cost and do it. Every ounce is good as the professional landscaper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Anyone else on the webinar wishing to speak? Go ahead and raise your hand and I will ask our city clerk if we've received any emails to be read into the record this evening.
We have not.
Okay. And last time here, asking for anyone wishing to speak. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public comment and bring that back. And so, Mr. Betts, if you could answer Mr. Austin's question regarding the recent plantings at La Plaza. If that was done the, the new way with the, the concrete or the, the old way that we've discussed and the permitting process and how, how easy are we making that would be helpful. And maybe answer the question regarding a professional versus a volunteer.
Absolutely. The, the recently planted London plain sycamores and, and it's the, the, the person from the, the public is close. It's, it's really the, the two tree plantings next, what I would call the sea trains next to Colony Deli. The La Plaza project has their own plan to do their own street trees. But that being said, those are the new standards. Those are our pilot program, if you will. So those are a little bit larger than what you typically see in our downtown area. Those are five by five. And that's primarily because the sidewalk is so wide to incorporate additional pedestrian traffic. The only difference is the flexible pavement port system has not been applied to those trees yet. We're working with the contractors to do that soon. But they, once they apply that, you'll see the fully completed project, if you will. So right now it's just native soil. That's been with a gap, a one to two inch gap for that new system to be mixed and poured into. Certainly the encroachment permit is going to be as streamlined as we possibly can. What our thoughts are and our intent is to have those arborists, if you will, or landscape professionals get what's called a blanket encroachment permit. So they don't have to get one for each and every site. And that does two things. One, we get to see if there's any traffic control issues or plans associated with those tree plantings, if you will, quite oftentimes with professionals within bringing in stump grinder or tools or whatnot. They have to take over a little bit of that sidewalk. So we want to ensure that we have path of travel to make sure we are ADA, we're meeting the full requirements of, of ADA. We certainly don't want to prevent anyone from accessing the sidewalks and primarily those businesses, because we want to encourage shopping and dining during that time. So if there has to be a, an alternative path of travel out into the street, we want to see that plan. We want to make sure we're comfortable with that before they start digging it out. And certainly the question has come up, you know, can we have just citizens start to plant the tree? Staff's recommendation is to not do that for a variety of reasons. Probably most importantly is with a certified arborist or professional landscaper, you really have folks that do this day in and day out. They have experience doing it in other cities throughout the county and the state. And in some instances, they will guarantee a one-year warranty, if you will, for those tree plantings as, as long as it's watered appropriately. Because they were able to mix the soil, planted to the specifications of the city and can follow the requirements for that. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that they, that they hire an arborist and or professional landscaper to install the tree.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Austin's point to, you know, how we, you know, communicate with our property owners and business owners, we will certainly be doing that and doing it with the, the utmost, you know, concern, of course, for their pocketbook and how can we help them be successful with this? And, you know, like anything else that a, you know, a property owner versus the business owner, there's always going to be things that the business owner might need to do on behalf of the property owner because they are renting that space. And so that will be up to those individual owners. And what most residents don't know is if you happen to live on a street with sidewalks, which there aren't a lot of those in Atascadero, you are responsible for the sidewalk and the trees. If we happen to have those again in Atascadero, there isn't a lot of that, but most folks don't know that. But we certainly will be very judicious with our communications with them and making sure that we are, are clear and as helpful as we can be. So thank you. Any council comments or anything before we have a motion? I will ask for a motion then. Councilmember Funk.
My move that we directly the staff to initiate phase two of the downtown street tree removal renewal program. And that we approve the downtown street tree guidelines.
And thank you. And does that include the updated exhibit?
Yes, including the updated exhibit.
Okay. And the second is good with that as well. All right. Motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Newsom. Roll call please. Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Betts. It's good to see you for the first time and I'm sure it's not the last.
Thank you.
And now we are on to council announcements and committee reports. And I will just kind of circle around on my screen, starting with Councilmember Darris.
Another report as usual.
Councilmember Warbeau?
Yeah, tomorrow integrated waste management authority meeting. And on Thursday, finance committee meeting, you know, one in our series of six or seven, I think six finance committee meetings. The public is welcome to participate in that.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Yes, we've got a big design review committee tomorrow that Mayor Portem Newsom will chair. And I'll be with her. We are looking at the Del Rio Ranch project. That's, that is the project that's proposed for the property in the Del Rio area that is, that is currently owned by that company in Arkansas. I don't name. And we're, so it's, this is arguably the largest available commercial property in town. And so that is a very interesting project. And has been the subject of comment. So two o'clock tomorrow and the information about the, those plans that we'll be reviewing and the numbers to call in or to, to the link to sign up are all available on the city's website. Look under the design review committee. And then homeless services oversight council executive committee will be meeting on the IT.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Newsom.
I had a eventful a couple of weeks and I wanted to thank everybody for their kind words while we were battling Abigail's illness. And thanks for those that stepped up in my capacity. And so I had no meetings the last few weeks. We're, we're covered here. So that's good. I'm looking forward to the design review committee on Thursday with Councilmember Funk.
So Thursday or Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you all. I had a regional transit authority meeting last week. Really just looking at the, the upcoming budget and I, you know, the LTF local transportation funds kind of up and down. And unfortunately it's looking like in 22, 23, RTA is looking at a pretty big ask, which of course reduces all of the jurisdictions. We'll know more later. They're expecting that number to come down, but it's significantly higher than usual, which is a little disconcerting. The bus maintenance facility is moving along at a good pace and expected, well, needs to be done February 2022 for us to make that move. And we have taken the first drawdown on the Tiffy loan. So that is going smoothly. And with that, we will move on to individual determinations. And before I go to the city manager and, and actually to our deputy city manager, do I have any from council? Councilmember Funk?
Yes, I, I did want to indicate that I have filed an appeal on the Dove Creek mini storage question that was approved by the planning commission, as has Mayor Portem Newsom. Because I'm asking for additional information, I wanted to mention this to council. And I will ask the city clerk to, rather than my reading my whole letter, to include my whole letter in the record. That'd be okay. What I'm asking for is better information on what the project actually will look like when viewed from the south, which is its longest face. And this is a, because this is a project that has 360 degree visibility. And secondarily, a little more information on, on the look on its facing on to VA Camino. There are a couple of other comments in there and I, but I do think it's appropriate for us to be handling this decision. And clerk, is there any problem with this going into the record, the, the full text going in the record?
No, both appeals that were filed are part of the record.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so we will move on to a deputy city manager, Laura Christensen, for her individual determination.
Thank you. So part of your packet is just some pending legislation, some senate bills that are out there. They're, right now they're just going through the committee process. But I wanted to bring some of them to your attention and see whether you were in agreement with having the city submit letters in either opposite or support. The first one is SB six, and this is a local planning one. It has to do with housing in commercial zones. And basically what's being proposed is that until I think it's 2029, the neighborhood homes act would allow for development to be anywhere in the city, even if it's zoned for office or for retail commercial, so long as that zone does not butt up, it's not next to an industrial use. So anywhere in the city, a developer could come in and request there to be housing, even if it's zoned office or retail commercial. The, right now, the California, the Cal cities or the league of California cities, their position is to oppose this unless it's amended. So far, those amendments that they have requested haven't come through. There are quite a few cities that are opposing this as well. And since I know this goes against some of what we've set as priorities in terms of developing our retail and commercial sections of the city, I just wanted to bring this one forward. There's also SB nine, which was originally the Cal cities position was opposed unless amended. There wasn't any traction on their amendments and they've changed that now to an opposition. This one is basically a ministerial approval of like duplexes and urban lot splits. So basically what it says is already we're sort of there with not having a lot of local control over ADUs or accessory dwelling units. What it says is if someone can put an accessory dwelling unit on a lot, then they should be able to have that lot. Then they should be able to have that lot split ministerially, so long as it meets. Some requirements and there there's no local control over whether or not those law splits occur. The issue that's been brought up and where a lot of the opposition lies is that that could, in effect, take. One single family lot and turn it into six lots. And so when it comes to density, when it comes to some of those issues that. Exist in cities and especially in cities such as ours. Having some of that where there is no local control and it is really just ministerial, you know, just across the counter. This is. Problematic. This is problematic on a lot of levels. There's a lot more that's built into this bill in terms of parking. In terms of where these are and aren't allowed and how much control a city can have. There had, there was some talk about. Originally, sorry, originally, this wasn't. Had nothing in there for high, very high fire severity zones. It does look like it's now been amended to say this would not apply to that, which is good. But it still doesn't take into account other zones where you wouldn't want this or other types of residentially. Zoned lots like we have where we have different types of residential lots. This would not take that into account. So that's another one I wanted to bring to our attention. And then also SB six one nine. This is a support in concept. We all know that SB 1383 is looming out there. That it goes into effect. January 1st, 2022. This bill would not stop it from going into effect, but it would give a year's break on the potential. Imposition of fines by Cal Recycle. So while it doesn't give us more time to get things implemented. It does give us time of reprieve, at least another year. So far, it's going till 2023. A reprieve on the implementation of fines, which is good, since that goes more towards that good faith effort. And it shows that if. You're working towards getting this stuff going, that Cal Recycle is not going to start implementing fines. So in concept, we're still waiting to see if some amendments that have been proposed. Will come through or what some of the language, some of this language is still being flushed out, what that'll look like. But the fact that a bill has been put forward to help cities and jurisdictions. Get this implemented and get some time going for it is beneficial. So I just wanted to bring those three forward. It doesn't really meet what we have in the norms for just going across to the mayor. These aren't. Technically, these aren't time sensitive at the moment because they're still in the senate committee process. So I did want to bring these forward and. Check in with you guys and see if these would be ones you would want us to draft letters for to have the mayor submit. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And so we know because this is in our packet, but just to clarify for the public, the positions we're taking here on all three of these. Even the last one in concept is in alignment with the with what the League of California Cities is also doing.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions from council? Seen none. Do we, I don't think this is a motion so much as just sort of, hey, generally speaking, I think, can we. Agree in concept that we would like to move forward with these letters as put out. Councilmember Funk, yes?
Yes, and and I, yes, I I agree in concept with on all three of these. Because we are working hard at getting more housing in the community in ways that work for our community. As well as in attracting the commercial and jobs development that we desperately need for balance. And I want to thank our our own state senator for reaching out to to create some more flexibility. From cities, four cities on the SB 1383 goals, which which, as I understand it, are about. The organic waste, food waste, you know, that big component of. Of of our our waste that that is just a shame to have it happen the way it is. But we need flexibility.
And yes, I mean, we could see that design review committee turning into a complete. Residential area, right? Where we're talking about if something like.
Yeah.
Through. So SB six would be quite horrific for that commercial node. Okay, so do we have a general, if I could get nods or thumbs up on what Laura has recommended? Yes, all right. Thank you, Laura, for bringing that to us. We appreciate it. And with that, we will adjourn our city council meeting and we will return to closed session. So.
Mayor, I would add that. We do not anticipate there's going to be any reportable action coming out of the closed session. If there is no reportable action, then we're just going to adjourn the meeting at the end of the closed session. If for some reason, which is unlikely, that there is reportable action, we'll come back into open session and report it. But. Right at this point, it's not anticipated there will be.
Wonderful, thank you.